Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to unveil, introduce, and present a new citizen service request system. As you know, in 2017, 2018, and then in 2019, the Board of Commissioners made commitments for communication, reaching out to the citizens, reaching out to the community. It's been an initiative that we began many years ago. We began in earnest in 2021, working toward this, utilizing the geographic information system and the software related to that, to take a request system that was working, but rudimentary. It didn't allow for all of the different things that we are now able to do. And we wanted to unveil this and go into greater detail. Ms. McElvein will get into the details and the work of what has been done. And before I introduce her, I just want to say, number one, thank you to the Board of Commissioners in 18, 19, 20, and 21 for appropriating the funds and the patience to allow us to develop all of these various programs that allow us to not only reach out to the community more and provide a way for the community to reach us, but now, as you will see in the presentation, the ability to also gather data to make better business decisions in all that we do. And with that, I'll say this, every department, especially the field people that will be gathering the data, the work that has gone in by Ms. McElvein, the directors, and the field people in every department, in order to test this, which we've been doing beta testing, it has been tremendous. The support has been tremendous, and it's all been driven toward making sure that we provide the high quality of service that this board and this administration demand. So with that, Ashley, and I can't say enough about the time that she's put into this with everyone else. So floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Manager Manfredi, Board of Commissioners, Vice President Veighi, President Hecker, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight and for the commitment to this project. This has been a long journey, and I'm thrilled to finally be here before you tonight. I'm smiling behind this mask, although you can't see it. It's just been a team effort, and I'd like to just acknowledge the individuals who helped us get here. Nathan Vasserman has been behind the scenes, working through the technical details of this, and it is very technical, which you'll see, compiling truly a system that's combined with multiple applications. Michael Rubin, who has come in the past year to help us integrate this into the departments to make sure that this system is as robust as our departments and that they have the training they need to really implement it. Grace Sekulowski, who you'll see in all of the documentation that we'll provide you in terms of training and the website and our communications, and of course, to the township manager for his leadership and guidance through the process. So with that, I'd like to start off to where we are today. So as the manager spoke to, we do have a current system, but it's been made clear throughout the past few months and even years that it's insufficient. It doesn't meet the needs of our community or the expectations of the residents. And so there are some limitations with the program. I'm just going to highlight a few here, and I'm sure many of you are aware of these, such as the need to create a login, and so someone can't submit anonymously, which is an immediate barrier to them communicating with us. It's not mobile or user-friendly, so if somebody's out and about, they can't just make a submission. They have to do it when they get home, and it can be burdensome. It does not have a public-facing map, so when I submit something, only staff are going to see it. And that's a barrier because if I have, let's say, a pothole I want to report, and six of my neighbors have also called it into the township, we're already behind the game. I could have seen that it was already reported. I could have looked at the status of it, but instead, there are more calls coming in and taking up staff time and elongating that process. It's a notification system only, and this is an important piece because once you submit into the system, an email is sent out to the various staff in the departments. And then each individual department follows the procedures they have outlined for how they're going to address those requests. And what often happens is we communicate differently to the residents, so there's different expectations running on the department, and sometimes they may not have a clear resolution. And then there's no data collected, so if we don't have a backend, we don't know how many reports we're getting in township-wide. It's happening at that department level, and so we don't have information to help inform our decision-making. So as Manager Manfredi spoke to in late 2019, he approached me regarding this project and made it clear that there was really two goals. The first was to provide a better mechanism for residents to communicate service requests and issues to the township. And the second was to establish a uniform process across all departments for handling and managing the requests that would provide a clear and consistent response always, in addition to data that could be used to better inform management and decision-making. So immediately started on the request, and then shortly thereafter was halted due to the COVID-19 pandemic and just restructuring priorities to continue with business. And so worked through that, and thankfully, at the early 2021, we were able to renew this effort. And we evaluated many programs, so you're probably familiar with C Click Fix It or Report It that other communities use, and various web faces. But it was clear that our operations here and the expectations of those two goals really mandated an application that was custom to the township. And so Nathan and I worked through what that would look like, and through our existing Esri enterprise contract, we have the availability of these applications that would be at no additional cost. And so what we've done is we've configured a program utilizing different applications that's cost-effective because we're not paying separately for it, but it also integrates into the geographic information systems program here at the township that the departments are more and more familiar with and utilizing. So with that, here is our new system, an image of it, which immediately addresses all of those concerns that I just spoke to. So this is a more accessible and transparent system. You can submit as a guest. You can submit anonymously. It's mobile and tablet-friendly. It integrates with your phone, so you can upload photos and location services. But more importantly, it builds upon that foundation and provides us an entire backend. So it establishes one system for collecting non-emergency requests. It essentially creates a ticket system for all township departments so that we're all following the same workflow and the expectations of what that looks like to the residents and ensuring a response. So it improves our responses to service requests and increases efficiency of our departments because now there's an outlined process. It's clear who's responsible for what, and hopefully, will reduce the number of calls that are coming in because residents can be engaged through the program and see what's happening. It also translates into efficiency that we're not using a paper ticket system out in the field, coming back in and transcribing it, and it's reducing that time and redundancy. And it provides data analytics that, again, will help inform budget planning, which I will get into in a little bit. So what does this look like? So as I mentioned, we're utilizing Esri, several applications through here which are mentioned here, but I'd like you to visualize kind of three distinct users. We have a submitter, the individual who is reporting the service request or the issue. We have the dispatcher, the person who is responsible, once that notification comes in, for assigning it to a field worker, and the field worker, who's the individual who will do the task, manage the platform with updating it so that the resident can stay informed until ultimately the request is addressed. So here is a workflow, and keep these colors in mind because they're going to look familiar when I do a very brief demonstration. So we're going to proceed as a guest, and we're going to see a pop-up which just explains what the tool is and how to use it. I'm not going to get into the resident kind of portion on this in terms of the workflow because I have a very brief video that will illustrate that later. But on the right-hand side, we see a list of categories. On the left-hand side, we see the map of the township. These categories expand upon the ones in our existing program and then have subcategories that will be modified as we go and as we see the types of reports that are coming in. So I'm going to, for the sake of this illustration, click on roadways, hazards, and signs. And so you can see, and it's a little hard here on the projector, but you can see that the presentation has been modified to see the requests that are associated with that individual category. So on the right-hand side, we're seeing all of the reports that have come in, and then we're seeing the dots populate, which reflect those reports. And you see three colors here. We have four. Red means submit it. Yellow means receive, so that an email has been sent. Blue means in progress, and green means completed. So we can either search by address, location, but I find it most convenient to just click on the dot. My computer lets me. And then we can see the information associated with that request. So this is an example where somebody would have called into Public Works, notified them that there was a sinkhole. That got sent out to the field worker. We can see here, the status is completed. The resident will be able to see the resolution, and the workers uploaded an image that the resident can see that the matter was resolved. And so residents can follow in real time with our progress on their requests. And as we click on any number of these, you'll start to see the map populate to the various activities. Okay. And you know what? I will just touch on briefly, if a resident wants to submit here, which I'll go through this, they would just click Submit a Service, and then they'll see the list of predetermined categories, but I won't spend too much time on that now. So this is what that process looks like, if you can imagine yourself as a user internally within the department. So a resident would submit through the platform we just saw. A notification email would be sent out. The dispatcher would assign it through the platform, and then the field worker would be notified on their township device. They would click on their to-do list, see it, and then complete the information to ultimately feed into that portal. And I think it's important to note that with our existing program, each step of the way is cataloged. So now we have data that we can use, and this is an example of some of the data that's collected, that we have a submitted date, assigned date, in progress. And this is just some of the information, but you can immediately begin to see the utility in having this, especially for department directors who might be managing this request. What's important is that we chose to go with Esri because it is bound geographically many of these issues, is that we can take what is oftentimes a challenging Excel, where you have to re-download it, set your filters, do your formulas, to get something that's, you know, something you can digest into something that's easily understood. So Esri has various dashboards that we can use to help us better manage our requests. And here's an example. So that Excel, that traditional means, now we can start to portray and illustrate this data in a way that makes it a little bit more sense more quickly. So through this program, obviously, we can better manage our requests and assist with oversight. We can begin to quantify the types and number of requests, which is very difficult to do right now when it's happening at the department level. We can see patterns. Maybe there's seasonal requests or high-needs locations that help us inform our operating capital budget requests because when we can begin to see those trends, we can prioritize those areas for perhaps expanding operations if we need to, or capital budget in that area. And I think I'd like to just spend some time on this because I think there are several pieces here that would be of interest to you all. So I do want to say, this is just an example of what a dashboard can look like. We can build these out for a number of different tools, but this data, for the most part, is actually what's happening because we're in internal testing. But some of the data in here is test data. So here's an overview. What we can do is start to dive into what that looks like. So now we've taken, you know, just the numbers, and we can depict it in a different way. We can build that out, so we can utilize filters. So for example, if I want to just see what's happening on the roadway hazards and signs, I can begin to see that immediately and then break down from here. So I could click on something, and our table would update that has all that information related to that task in case, you know, a department needs to follow up. But what I think will be of interest to all of you is we can break this out by ward. So we can start to see what's happening in our own communities. So here, and just for the sake of this example, I'll use President Hecker, Ward 1. You know, you'll have access to a map, or you can come in and you can start to see what's happening in your ward and the tasks that might still be lingering or open. So you can click on a task. You can see the information to it. You know, here we can see this was submitted on June 8th. It was a missed brush. It took less than a day to resolve. The resolution was they picked it up. And then we can also use that to, you know, we can use other dashboards, and this is, again, broken out by Ward 1, but it's just another way to illustrate the data. So this is a massive tool, not only for departments, for you all, and for the public, to visualize all of the work that we're doing. So I know that was a lot and brief, but I have here the timeline. I know I walked through a lot of this. We've been going through our internal testing. We will continue through that as we work through, you know, all of the different feedback that we receive here tonight and from the departments, with the hope that we'll ultimately go live in August. So our next steps are, you know, addressing your feedback that we receive. We'll continue our internal testing and making sure that we refine the tool so that it's not only conceptually great, but that it's great in the field. And we'll finalize our promotional and informational materials. So, you know, here's an example of what the website will look like, and the information will be giving out to the public. And then I would just like to close with a quick video. So I spoke to kind of what it's going to look like briefly for the resident, but I think this will help illustrate just how simple it is. So it's less than a minute, and then I'll open it up, or we'll be taking questions in the working session. Did you want to say anything before the video, or can I?
Yes. So Ashley touched on the social media packages that will be developed shortly after this. The other thing that's important to note is, right now, a lot of this activity is commissioners sending emails to directors or different people. This system, if utilized by commissioners using this system, advising their citizens to do that, is what will allow your ward maps to populate all this data, which will allow the citizens to see that what they asked for has actually been accomplished and when. So, you know, the idea is to shift from email and text to a system that can now populate all that data, gather that data. And just want to be sure we say, we understand that this is really a management tool, that we don't really present these sort of administrative activities. But this was such an important piece that we've talked about publicly so many times, about interacting with the public. We thought it was worth taking the time to do this presentation this way and to get your feedback and answer any questions and take any comments from the public as well. So with that said...
Thank you. All right. So I will close with this short video. Am I to stop it when I made it? Submitting a non-emergency service request or reporting an issue to the township has never been easier. Through our new online citizen service request tool, conveniently alert township staff about non-emergency needs in your neighborhood, make a request for service, or view submitted reports from your phone, tablet, or computer at any time. Residents can create a login or proceed as a guest and select the category that best fits their need. The user-friendly form makes submissions simple with geo-location and a search tool to quickly identify the report location and the ability to take and upload photos directly into the app. By clicking on an existing report, residents can check its status or read its resolution. For more information, including a step-by-step guide, visit www.abbingtonpa.gov/service-request-tool. I should caveat with that, it's not live yet, so please don't go there. But, well, thank you. That is the end of the presentation, and I hope that was informative but brief.
Ashley, it was excellent presentation, and I know I speak for all of my colleagues when we extend our gratitude to you and the team for the countless hours of work leading to this high-quality product, which I think will improve our ability to track the issues in the township and to be more responsive. I have one quick question, and then I'll open the floor for my colleagues. So as part of the workflow process, I understand the ward commissioners will have the opportunity to go to the map and see from a broad view, but will the commissioners be notified as part of that workflow email process that a complaint has come in from the township, from a resident directly through the system?
We mirrored our existing system, which does not do that right now. I would be, as you could see, there have been over 200 requests that have come in in the last three weeks just to Public Works.
Yep.
So, you know, there's flexibility there, but it would be, your inbox would be full. I think this tool, if we give you the right tools, we would be able to give you a table that would illustrate all of that right away, so you weren't bogged down. So the way that the workflow is right now, it's not, but it can certainly be modified if that's what you'd like to do.
I'm not sure. I'm just asking. I know, I think many of us like to be proactive, and it doesn't always happen this way, but many of, we get calls and emails from residents, and often, we're the catalyst for bringing something forward. Not always, but often. And I think if there's a way for us to be informed, not necessarily, it doesn't have to be every email. I don't know if there's a way to do it in summary form with some frequency, but I think I would prefer to know rather than waiting for me to go click the map to see what's going on, when things are live, and what they are, just so that it does require some intervention on the commissioner's part to nudge something along that we have the ability to do so.
Sure. Yeah, and we can certainly look to build out a dashboard that perhaps is refining itself by like a day or a week or time period that's identified.
Something like that could work.
But we have the capabilities. It's just refining what it's going to look like.
Yep. Thank you. Again, I will open the floor. Are there questions from members of the board who are here in the room? Commissioner Schreiber, and then Commissioner Ball.
Very good presentation. Thank you. So if there is a resident who doesn't have access to computers or whatever, and they call it in like the old-fashioned way that we all kind of were trained to do, does the person they call it into then put it into the system?
Yes. So that staff has been trained to encourage someone to complete it online just because there may be greater detail they want to provide, but if that's not the case, they will manually put it in when they're taking that call so that it can be reflected in the data. So that is the process as it is today. Yes.
Okay. So they, and my other question went out of my head. I'll come back to it.
Okay. Commissioner Ball?
Thank you, Ashley. It was great. Yeah, this will be terrific. I apologize if I missed this. When people do not submit something anonymously when they log in with their name and information, is there anything in the system that pushes an email to them when the job is completed? Or would they go back in? In other words, you know, just to sort of close the loop from the requester standpoint?
Yeah. That is one of the limitations of the program, and we're working through it. It likely will need to be some type of script that we haven't been able to build out just yet. The way that it works right now is, once a submission is put in, a script runs every 15 minutes, so they'll receive, you know, a receipt notice that it's been, but they'll have to check back to see the status at this point. That is an ultimate goal, and we're kind of aware of that that is a current constraint of this program.
And following up on that, thank you. Are there, like, where's the company themselves in the creation of the tool? And do we anticipate sort of upgrades happening in years to come? I'm just thinking about the sort of life cycle of technology, and are they looking to do upgrades that would add elements that are sort of bells and whistles to this over time?
Sure. So Esri is always doing updates. In fact, the applications that we are using are being updated as we speak. So what is unique about this is that Esri has a service request tool, which is a built-out package. But because we had two goals, and one of those big goals being able to manage to make sure we're answering these, we've created our own system that is unique to Abington. There is no other community that has the workflows that I presented here. And so we have the flexibility to manage and update this as we see fit, and I think that's the goal of, you know, the office of Township Manager, to make sure that this reflects the community and what we're looking for. So we have total flexibility in that regard.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations again. This is great.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Came back to me. All the different things that you showed us, the map, the thing that had the statistics, how many in each, the dashboard, I think you called it. Residents can see that as well, all of those things? Can they see all the, or is that just department heads, people on staff, and the commissioners and stuff?
So the dashboards that I showed today were kind of examples of what the tools we have. I think the goal is that we would provide each of the directors a dashboard that's unique to their interests and what they would like to see. We do, on the public-facing map, have proposed statistics that would go out to the residents that would be integrated through the website. So they would essentially be able to see the same type of data displayed. It would just be happening through the website versus a dashboard so that we don't have to have them go out to another platform, you know, additional clicks. So I think I can show you, show an example, but yes, the short answer is, they will be able to see a lot of the same data, but dashboards can be unique to the individual departments. So I don't think we'll put up all of the various ones.
Yeah, it seemed like a lot of, you know, with the red, yellow, green, all that, like, where they, I'm not sure that, it seems like a lot of data to go out to everybody that, like, most people wouldn't probably even care, but, I mean, it just seemed like a lot there.
Sure. So, yeah. You can see here, this is some of the, kind of, the standard statistics that are given out, but so residents can get a sense of the number of requests that are coming in, how many have been resolved, the type of requests, the type of, you know, what are the most popular? So we, you know, we can keep it high level, kind of for the sake of not confusing somebody, but we'll continue to modify this before we go live.
Thank you. Other questions for members here in the room?
I thought I saw two hands up from commissioners who were on Zoom. If we could go back to that.
I see Commissioner Spiegelman, and then Commissioner Dietlissito.
Thank you very much, President Hecker. Ashley, I echo my colleagues' praise. This is a masterwork. Cannot wait for this to go online, and the work of everyone involved is deeply appreciated. President Hecker presaged my thoughts regarding some kind of mechanism for commissioners to be notified when something comes in, either, you know, if not directly, because you said that the volume is significant, but as President Hecker mentioned, in some sort of digest form. I'm certainly in favor of that because I like to track all of that. For some of us, certainly for me, the wards we represent include a great deal of school district property. And I know that I, on a fairly frequent basis, get property maintenance and other complaints from residents that pertain to school district property. And I kind of give them a civics lesson that it's different, but then I'll usually, I'll usually share those with the facilities people, whoever, whoever the appropriate person is for the school district. If someone attempts, in this system, if a resident attempts to use the system and they submit a complaint or concern regarding something that is not in the township's purview, does the system have a mechanism for handling that, those kind of data, like anomalous data?
No, that's a great question and something that has come up several times. Wastewater, particularly, was concerned about this because a lot of the questions they get are for Aqua or for another provider. And really, what we've advised departments at this point to do is to follow their regular protocol. So they would put, you know, they may reach out to the resident and communicate with them that this is, you know, a school district issue, or forward it out to the proper facilities person over at the school district, and then they would make the resolution, you know, that they've subsequently notified the school district, but this is not a township matter.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Commissioner DiPulcito?
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. Actually, that was kind of a legacy hand. I'm going to lower it right now, because Commissioner Spiegelman and Commissioner Ball asked my two questions. So I'll just say, great presentation, Ashley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. We appreciate your legacy. Thank you. I know that was lame. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay. And again, we will take public comment on this as part of the working session when that officially convenes. Thank you again, Ashley. Appreciate it. Good evening and welcome to the July 14, 2022, meeting of the working session of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of May 12, 2022, and I so moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We will now take public comment on agenda items, and again, we will take comment on the presentation that occurred at the outset this evening, just shortly after 7:00 PM, or, and on the second agenda item about Martin Luther King Day future planning. That's what I'm saying, we're taking, I'm just explaining what we're taking public comment on, since the presentation was earlier. I see we have one hand up?
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Metta Brook. So first of all, you did not, Commissioner Hecker, even ask if in the audience there was somebody that hadn't seen the presentation and might want to comment.
Well, the present, so if anybody, this will be, it'll be publicly available, because it was presented and recorded, it'll be on the township YouTube channel and everywhere else.
They may have attended this meeting in order to comment, so you may have a view of perhaps a little bit here, but that should have been something, I mentioned it at the last meeting, that, you know, how are you going to handle that? So I don't want to use up my speaking time doing that, but, you know, that's not appropriate. I'm trying to get the residents to get the respect that they need from the people to understand what their issues are. And so once again, you did schedule the meeting a half an hour after the other meeting, right? So we're now at 8:12, starting the working session, and we started it at 7:35. So in this particular case, it was, you know, a little bit more than a half an hour. But in many cases, it's over an hour. So please consider that as respect of the residents. And in the beginning of this meeting, we had to listen to Flonase and a couple of other things that could have been time that the residents could have been either asking questions about their technological connections here, and whether their technology's working, or they could have been asking you questions that they don't have time to do in the short time you give them to speak. So instead of listening to commissioners banter with each other, when you have residents here in the meeting, open the mics and let them ask questions during that time. Okay? As far as the procedure, the new vehicle goes, I think it can be a good thing, but we do have a lot of people in this community that are not very savvy or wanting to be constantly on the computer. And so I hope that there will be a lot of accommodation for that. My husband has called, I think, three times on a pothole on Huntington Pike, and that pothole's still there the last time we went by. That's not appropriate. And we still can't get somebody to answer the phone. So we had, you know, lots of staff working on this, but no one to answer the phone. So, you know, when we can't get basic services first, these fancier services are not impressive. We have to start with making sure that basic services are there and the phone is answered, and that when people come to a meeting and tell you that they've got a bladed property, we need somebody to do something about it right away. They shouldn't have to come to another meeting. They should have somebody do something about it right away. And it's not that they couldn't have done that until they got this technology in there. Okay? And the technology separates us from the people that we're used to talking to on the phone and actually saying more than just, "Check this box, yes, there's a pothole." Okay? And what date will it be filled? There's often more to it than that. Sometimes, you know, you want to tell somebody, "You got to get somebody out there right away. This pothole's dangerous. Somebody's going to get hurt." And so we need to have a responsive township, and putting together this fancy schmancy technology is not necessarily going to do it unless you still answer the phones and answer the calls that you hear being asked, and be responsive to the residents that you have. So, you know, I'm waiting to see how the citizen service goes, but I hope you're hearing me loud and clear, as you have heard many, many people come to the podium and say they can't get an answer from Mr. Manfredi. They can't get a meeting with Mr. Manfredi. No other manager have we ever had that you couldn't get a meeting with, or you couldn't get a phone call from. It's stunning that you think that this is okay, that all 15 of you think that this is okay, because it's not. And we need to get back to having proper citizen service, where the citizens are respected. Okay? And so again, I'm going to ask you again, Commissioner Hecker, to correct the record about how citizens get things fixed, because--
Ms. Lehman, you have 10 seconds.
Okay. So this also is a vehicle that should have come before the public to be vetted, and the public should have had input as to what kind of features didn't go in there, or what things they liked or didn't like. But none of that was done. We didn't even know what you were doing. That's not okay.
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Then we will move to the one agenda item that we have, and this is for us to have a discussion about Martin Luther King Day Junior, future, Martin Luther King Junior Day future planning. And for this, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Carswell.
Thank you. So for the last two years, I have helped facilitate our ongoing tradition of hosting an event for MLK Day for the first chunk of history. That has been an event in-person held over at the high school, lots of elected officials and community members coming out for it. And then the pandemic hit, and on top of the pandemic, we lost the person who had chaired, shouldn't say lost, he moved out of the community, doing well, but moved out of town, and that meant that we had an opening to decide, what do we do about this? And it felt too important, and amongst the colleagues that I talked to, too important to let go. So I will say, I jumped into action, but I also do what I do best, which is go find a whole bunch of other people to join me in doing this. And with a lot of help from our township staff, and from members of the police department, and the school district, and members of our community, and some of our volunteer boards, like the Human Relations Commission, we pulled off our first, all virtual. We did again, the second year again, with great help from the Human Relations Commission. And so what I wanted to bring to all of you was, let's stay committed to this effort. Let's stay committed to hosting MLK Day is an important part of our annual calendar. Let's stay committed to adding community service to that as a way to engage all different members of our community throughout our community. But let's do it strategically, and let's invite community members to help be a part of that by establishing an annual committee run by a team of volunteers. Some have said, oh, no, you have to recruit more volunteers, and we live in a jaded world where people are exhausted, and no one will want to sign up. And I say, I disagree. I really do think people will. I think this is a very unique opportunity compared to all of our other committees. This doesn't require some of the same challenges or knowledge or skill sets as some of our other boards and committees. And I think it's a really neat way to invite a diverse population of younger, older, from one side of the township to the next, people with totally different career backgrounds and interests to come together and do this. And so my hope is that everyone will say, yes, thumbs up, this is a great idea, and that next month we can make it official, and then go the route of recruiting people, so that comes January, we have another wonderful program, and hopefully not virtual, but even if it has to be virtual, it'll be a great one. So that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. I'm going to open it up for questions and comments. Commissioner Schreiber?
Yeah, thank you. So after this idea was voiced, it had gone through the Human Relations Commission. They met, I guess it was last week, last night? I don't know, a week ago, whenever they met for their regular meeting, and discussed the possibility of rolling this into part of their charge, and they were very excited about that idea. You know, had some questions, of course, about what that might look like, and how creative they could be, and what was, what went into it before, who was involved before, because I think they would like to use some of the groups that were involved before, like the police and other groups at the NAACP and stuff, so they'll probably be pulling those in as well. But to me, I think that's a great idea, to have them kind of roll that into what they do and see where that goes. So I'm going to put that idea out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Other comments or questions from Commissioner Ball? You look like you want to say something.
Well, I just want to ask, is that the idea, or that's an idea, to roll it into the, I'm just a little confused about what the, what I heard you saying, Commissioner Carswell, was that the, there was an idea to propose, the creation of a committee, there's another idea on the table of folding it into the Human Relations Commission? Are they two different ideas that we have to resolve?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I'm not really sure. That wasn't, it didn't come from me. So I can't speak to that, how that came about.
So we, I worked with, I'll just say commissioner, officer town, nope, manager, there we go, Manager Manfredi, sorry about that, to draft up sort of a charge for the committee. And we wanted to leave intentional flexibility, because, so for example, the first year that I helped with it, we had a large team of people involved, because we did a big lift. I mean, we were kind of insane in what we took on, but we had video clips of people, all different age groups, we had performances, I mean, we really, it was like a variety show. This last year was way easier in that it was, I'll say a single shot, and Grace will laugh at me, because that's not true, but it was an interview conducted between two people. So it was far different in terms of the scope of work going into it. But the idea was that the board would appoint someone to chair that committee, and they would build out the group they needed to make that happen. Do you want, Manfredi, would you like to, do you want to add anything to what I just said, or does that?
I think you said a lot of it. I think the only piece is the HRC piece. They did meet last night. They did consider a lot of the ideas that you had put forward, and I know they communicated with me today. I haven't had a chance until late in the day to look at it and digest it, but I think everything you said is accurate. I don't think there's really much more to add.
Vice President Veggie?
So I think Commissioner Carswell was referring to me, because I was one of the people who had some agenda about trying to recruit additional volunteers to populate another committee. But my underst, and so it was, Commissioner Schreiber and I thought of the idea that maybe we could use the HRC in already very active committee, maybe, that would easy the task of finding new volunteers for the effort. But if I'm understanding the resolution or the plan, if we're just appointing a chair and that chair assembles the committee to get the job done, the board could very easily appoint the chair of the HRC to run the effort, if that's the direction the board wants to go. So if that flexibility is there, it is my concern about recruitment, and, you know, it allows us to go in a different direction if we feel like we have enough people to fill out the committee.
Yeah, so I thought it would be really helpful to give us flexibility, because at any point in time, things change, right? I think we've learned that in the last two years in space. Both years, members of the HRC were involved, the second year way more than the first. And I think that they are all committed to a shared goal of increasing engagement in our community around issues around diversity and inclusion, which is totally spot-on with the, the sort of the core feel about what MLK as an event can be in this community. So what I would recommend is that, the way it's written, that we have the ability to ask the HRC to take the lead role, to chair it, to build out the team. If it, if it's instead a charge of their, not a separate committee, but under their purview, they don't have currently the ability to add more members to their group, and so that might limit their ability to do something bigger or smaller. I don't advocate, one way or another, how the event is structured, other than I hope they will continue to have service as part of it. But I think one of the things that was super fun about these last two years is that we had the flexibility to just take it in a completely different direction from where it had been, and where it had been the year before. So I think the most important part is getting engaged group of volunteers who want to take it and really own it, so that this has legs for many years to come.
Agree with that comment. Manager Manfredi?
And again, many commissioners have not seen this, but Joanne Kleiner, Chair of the HRC, did report back today, I candidly didn't see it until late in the day, that they did meet last night, that the HRC is on board with handling the programming, would be looking forward to it. Any guidance from the board of the township would be greatly appreciated, and I think the volunteers would be an issue, and how you decide to structure it, whether it becomes an activity of it, or if they want to recruit volunteers. I guess the question would be of them, do you need more people, or would you want to do volunteers, or to your point, would you want to amend the ordinance to allow different class? There's a lot of different options the board has. It could be as simple as President Hecker, you know, just putting this task upon them, or them just taking it on on their own with your guidance and the parameters that you established.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber, go ahead.
Okay. This is just an answer to what was just said, because I did talk to Joanne Kleiner today, this afternoon, and as of this point, if they are charged with this, they don't feel they need more members to, although, as I said, I think they're going to reach out to other community groups, but if they did feel they needed more, they would ask, and they would come forward with it. And they, and she also shared with me a really kind of cool, creative idea that they had, so I'm not going to say it, because it might not happen, but that I thought was really different. So I think they might take it into a very interesting direction.
Commissioner Ball?
Two quick related comments. One, tongue-in-cheek reference to the important work we're going to do as a strategic planning commission, because this is a small snippet of what happens when you get tactical without first being strategic. This should not, and we're not doing it now, but it can't devolve into a who gets to do this thing, where we're saying no to a very willing, able body, right? And secondly, I think the spirit that, of Commissioner Luger that you've continued, Commissioner Carswell, over the last couple of years, has been one that seeks maximum engagement, right? So I personally think that the wrong starting place is to say, and I know you're just representing comments, Commissioner Schreiber, but like, that there are enough people to do it. I think it's successful because it's strategically designed to try and engage more people. So I think my personal bent is that we should be seeking more people, we should be trying to figure out how to expand on the partnership that happened with the school district over the last several years. We should be thinking creatively, or, and if that's the, if that becomes the task of a member of the HRC, because they've already committed that those values that the HRC stands for are part of what they want to do, great. But I don't think, I think we'd be missing an opportunity if we just deployed this to the HRC and said, we've got enough people to plan it, phew, one less thing off our plate, because I think the ambition of engagement is in and of itself a worthy venture with the celebration itself. So I just, I don't want to, if we define the leader and the committee to do it, I hope we don't lose that one of the goals is to-- I hope we don't lose that one of the goals is to maximize engagement and to make the effort to recruit people creatively. Optimism, you know?
I think that's well said, Commissioner Ball. And I, to the point that Commissioner Carswell made earlier, I think the way that the language is currently constructed, it allows us the flexibility to adapt based on circumstances and we can get to those granular specifics. I think there's, nobody here would disagree with the goal of broadening the outreach efforts and participation across the whole of the township, and I think that's the starting point. Any other comments or questions? So my understanding is that this would be something that we would be taking up at the August meeting?
Yeah, so my hope is that we would take the final write-up and vote on it in the next month, in August, which would then allow us the ability to appoint a chair and let them build a committee. I would think that's going to take them four to six weeks because it's the worst time of year to recruit because it's August. But, and people tend to be offline or just hiding under air conditioning units. But the, depending on the scope of what they want to tackle, they're going to design that and need some months to put it together because everything needs to be buttoned down before the winter holidays so that we can then begin promoting it.
Okay.
And just so I'm clear on direction, the final version of the draft would give the board the option, and when they consider it as publicly in August, to go in either direction? Or do you want to give me guidance on at that time? Because we talked about, we talked about a committee, we talked about populating a committee, and we talked about, well, you talked about.
It seems to me that between now and the August meeting, that we ought to strive for clarity about how we want to engage the HRC, which sounds to me like they're very eager to be further engaged. And I think we should look to define what that engagement looks like, but also retain the flexibility for the board moving forward. So I don't know exactly what that looks like, but that's what I'm hearing.
I think what you just said gives me enough guidance based on what we've already done.
Okay. Any final comments or questions about this? Hearing none, we are adjourned.